Okay, I'd like to call the regular city commission meeting of Tuesday, May 19th, 2020 to order and ask all of you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Be standing up.
I don't know, that's what I was wondering. All right.
Pledge allegiance.
Thank you. Start with roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Present.
Commissioner Oldsmun. Commissioner Jenks.
Present.
Commissioner Elder.
Present.
Mayor Paul, present. We have a agenda prepared. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have a consent agenda this evening. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
We'll take a roll call vote on the vote. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Oldsmun.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder.
Aye.
Mayor Paul. Being on to our county commission and elected officials, I don't see any present. So we'll move on to public participation. Is there, if there is a member of the public that would like to speak to an item that is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity.
I.
Are they all unmuted?
This is Helene Zach that I would like to speak. I couldn't get into Zoom. Can you hear me?
We can, because Commissioner Zach.
Okay. Okay, it's a pleasure. I tried to get into the Zoom part. I didn't have the right link. So, but it's nice to be here. I've been working hard as your commissioner. It's keeping me extremely busy. Cut off the press, we are opening up testing to no reason testing and Oakland County is offering testing at our health department on Mondays and Wednesdays. And to do that, you need to call the nurse online to make a nurse on call line to make an appointment for your testing. And that telephone number is 248-858-5533. Oakland County has the opportunity to receive $219 million from the CARES COVID Response Fund. And we are in the process of trying to figure out how best to use that money. And I did, you know, I welcome suggestions from our county commissioners, our city managers in my district with great ideas. There was an announcement today to set aside up to $30 million for costs that cities, villages, and townships are, you know, are getting as a result of COVID, such as more PTE equipment, those that one thing. We did also release 15 million, roughly $15 million to small businesses. And our businesses today, they called to thank me that they had received $5,000 grant for their business. Another thing that we are officially approving tomorrow is a contract, there's a couple of things, contract with Oakland Livingston Human Service Agency. They're going to be working with our workforce development department to work with people on financial coaching and other financial stabilization issues. We will be hiring five new counselors to service Oakland County residents. And by working with Oakland Livingston Human Service Agency, these residents will have access to the 70 different programs that they offer, such as the financial assistance for water bills. Also, we are going to be funding $10 million for nonprofits. And details about how to apply for that money will be coming out sooner versus later. Part of what we are going to be doing is contracting with United Way, and they will set up the grant process with an oversight committee from the county, you know, from the commission to oversee that. So that's another exciting opportunity. And we're moving forward into budget process. And like every other governmental unit, tightening their belt and seeing how do we move forward. We're also working on opening up county operations slowly. Courts are going to be the first thing that's going to come back. So, working on it, all the protection. Any?
Commissioner Zach, I had a question. That no reason COVID testing, is that the antibody test, the blood test, or is it a nasal swab for the actual virus? Do you know?
It's a swab for the virus. It's not antibody. It's a swab.
Got it.
No, it's the one prior to today that you, there were certain criteria that you had to meet that you were exposed, or you know, there were, you had to cite some reason. And today we opened it up to say you want, you feel you need to get tested, you can get tested by appointment.
That's great. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Commissioner Zach? Okay, thank you, Helene.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other public comments?
Jamie Horowitz has her hand raised.
Okay, Jamie, please go ahead.
Hi, Mayor Paul, how are you doing?
Good.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I just wanted to thank you for your leadership and your service, all of you. I know you've had to make some really, really hard decisions over the past few weeks. Thank you for doing so quickly and decisively. Thank you to everyone in our library, Joyce Crum especially, and the programming that they've been providing. I've been in touch with Chief Pazehowski and what the police and public safety have been doing here for the kids has been amazing with birthday parties and the trucks and raising morale. So we're very lucky to live in this community. Also, Huntington Woods is number one on the census. We've reported almost 90%, I think. So good for us. Pleasant Ridge very shortly behind. Also, as many of you know, I am running for 45th District Court, Jamie Powell Horowitz, which serves Huntington Woods, Pleasant Ridge, Oak Park, and Royal Oak Township. Judge David Guboe, after serving as well for many years, is retiring. And I hope to provide the same kind of compassionate leadership that he has for this community. So thank you all of you for your service. Thank you for your support in my candidacy. And just keep doing, doing all the good work that you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments? Being on, we'll close public participation and I'll move on to a proclamation. We have a proclamation declaring the first Friday in June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the city of Huntington Woods, to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence, and to declare that we as a country must do more to reduce gun violence. Whereas every day, more than 100 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on an average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. Whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicide than people in other high-income countries. And whereas Michigan has 1,187 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 11.8 deaths per 100,000 people. Michigan has the 30th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. Whereas gun homicides predominantly occur in cities, with more than half of all firearm-related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including in Huntington Woods, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is the mayor's highest responsibility. Whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand-in-hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with the local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Whereas the pandemic facing America has drastically impacted communities and individuals sheltering in place, which may result in situations where access to firearms results in increased risk, intimate partner violence gun deaths, suicide by gun, and unintentional shootings. Whereas in January of 2013, Hadya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should now be celebrating her 23rd birthday. And whereas to help honor Hadya and more than 100 Americans whose lives are cut short every day, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 5th, 2020, the first Friday in June, as the sixth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadya's friends, who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 5th, the first Friday in June, in 2020, to help raise awareness about gun violence. Whereas by wearing orange on June 5th, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands, and encourage responsible gun ownership to keep, help keep our children. Now therefore be it resolved, that Mayor Bob Paul of the city of Huntington Woods declares the first Friday in June, June 5th, 2020, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. I encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence, and to honor the end value of human lives, proclaim this 19th day of May. Thank you. Moving on, it is time for a public hearing. This is a matter of receiving public input on the proposed 2020, 2021 city budget in accordance with Chapter 9, Section 8 of the City Charter. If there are any members of the public that would like to make a comment, now is the time.
Jay Schwartz has a question, please.
Please go ahead.
Yes, I am audio only tonight. Good evening, all. I have heard, and I would like a comment, please, that certain capital expenditures will be deferred for this year due to budget uncertainty. I would request that the, that those items that are going to be deferred, number one, are they going to be deferred? And could you please list briefly what items are going to be deferred? Thank you.
I could address.
Yes, so.
The deferment is only through September 22nd, when the next budget study session is set, and the commission has a chance to look at the actual revenue picture, the expenditures, and make budget adjustments at that time. And Tim, do you want to, do you have a list of.
Yeah.
Pointing, I know, parks.
Yeah, so right now it's, we have a server, server replacement is 12,000. Burton Park infield improvements, $40,000. Tennis court crack ceiling, $60,000. All vehicle purchases, $141,000. The Reynolds Park project, which is a 2020 budget item, we're putting that on hold, as well as wage increases for employees.
Okay, thank you. I assume that other things like building maintenance and things like that will proceed as scheduled. Also, could you please just briefly, are, I assume that many city employees obviously are not working. What is their general status? Are they furloughed without pay, or are we maintaining their benefits? Thank you.
Since every department is being handled differently, why don't I ask Mr. Schwartz to give me a call tomorrow, and I can go over it individually with them rather than go through all the detail at the meeting?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, with that, the public hearing on the budget is closed, and we'll move on to the regular items of business for the city commission, with the first item being the adopting of the city budget for fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021. We have a motion.
Move.
Okay. Amy, do you want to give a, or have Tim give a brief overview of anything, or are we?
Yeah, I can. So our overall millage rate is going to increase by 2.26 mills, and that's due to the new F345 that was passed on the March election, which is 2.29 mills. On the city water rate is going to increase by 10 cents to $13.25. And we're also going to continue the new $2.35 debt repayment fee on the water bill that was started this April. And in my opinion, the big highlight of the budget is $7.6 million in capital improvements for road and sewers throughout the city.
Thank you, Tim. Commissioner Jenks, I know, asked for me to check with Congressman Levin regarding the, the Heroes legislation that was just passed in the House, and whether our budget, if it, if it didn't reflect the loss in revenue and the increased expenses due to COVID, if we would still qualify, or any potential funding that will come from that. And he did assure me that we would, that our budget does not need to reflect those in advance.
Well, and it's also probably going to be September or later before that kind of funding becomes available, if it does.
Yeah, just, just to temper everyone's expectations, that bill will never make it through the U.S. Senate, ever. So.
The way it's written.
Yeah, let's just be realistic here, and not think we're going to see a nickel of any of that federal money. It will not make it through the Senate.
Mr. Mayor, this afternoon, I found out about the U.S. Economic Development Administration's new funding that was just released. And I would advise that Ms. Sullivan, if you could please look into if there are any opportunities for us, they're just looking for general ideas of local governments that have been impacted by COVID-19, and what projects that they could help match or help fund. There's some vagueness in how much they're willing to fund, but I just sent you that information, close of business today. So if you could look into that, that was something that was available recently.
Be happy to.
Mr. Mayor, also, just again, for the record, I'd like to put together a single-page sheet that can be sent to residents, either with their water bill, or, you know, as a separate mailer. Our residents have been very gracious in approving these additional, whether they be taxes, or the sewer charges on their tax bill or water bill. And I want them to see what they're getting for the additional dollars that they're having to pay, especially in light of the way the economy is going. So what you had in last meeting's budget presentation fits nicely on an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven piece of paper. Have our communication folks look at it to show the residents, here's where your dollars are going. And they're all being put to work, and certainly much appreciated as we work on the roads and the sewers and fixing the pension program. These are tough times, but we're doing the best we can to spend this money diligently and not let our infrastructure continue to deteriorate. I think that that's very important.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would also like the city to send the hardship information where people's taxes can be lowered based on hardship, if that information could be sent to residents. Because this is a year where a number of people are going to be hurt. If not this year, then especially in the next tax season. Let's let them know now about this program.
Yeah, that information is in the hometown herald that's about to go out.
Good, okay.
Okay, any other comments? All those in favor of adopting the budget? Actually, we'll do a roll call vote on that. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Oldsmun.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder. Mayor Paul, aye. Okay, motion carried. Moving on to item number two is a matter of authorizing collection of the tax administration fee in accordance with Public Act 503. We have a motion to approve.
Well, move. Support.
Any public comment? Comments or questions from the commission? All right, roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Oldsmun.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder.
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Item number three is a matter of transferring the delinquent water bills for 2019, 2020 to the 2020 summer tax rule of the city of Huntington Woods. We have a motion.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any public comment? Any comments or questions, Commissioner?
I have a question of our city manager. Are the numbers much higher this time for this than they were a year ago?
So last year, we had not 94 accounts. This year, we have 90, sorry, last year we had 91, this year 94. So there's three additional accounts. The amount is about $7,000 higher. So pretty consistent.
Okay. But I just, when I, for whatever reason, the, is a two-page, both sides of the document I was looking at, I thought, you know, this, this isn't looking good, but it obviously, it's the same as last year.
Right.
Are the, Tim, are the amounts similar?
Yeah, last year, it's about $7,000 more this year than it was last year.
No, I meant per house.
I mean, the rate went up last year, so I'd say it's consistent. They're pretty consistent from last year.
Okay, we did have a chat question from Claire Galad, who was wondering if the city was going to list addresses as they do for grass. I don't think we've done that in the past.
But I remember doing, doing that in the past, which is by account number.
Right. We list the parcel ID and the account number. All right. Any other, any comments or questions from the commission? Others? Okay. The roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Oldsmun.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder. Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Item number four is a matter of authorizing the annual agreement for the collection of the 2020 summer property taxes for the Berkeley School District. This is something that year, do we have? Thank you. Second from anyone?
I can.
Any public comment? None? Any comments or questions from the commission? Okay, roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Oldsmun.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder.
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. And moving on to item number five. This is a matter of authorizing the MERS Administrative Adoption Agreement. Amy or Tim, do you want to speak to this?
I can do that. The agreement is part of our setting up the Public Act 345, village and pension. The public safety divisions are a separate division within MERS, but MERS would like an additional agreement with the city that we cannot transfer money out of their division into, into the other divisions to, to share the funds. So that's the agreement with MERS that we agree that any Public Act 345 money staged within the divisions for public safety pensions only.
Okay, do we have a motion to adopt the agreement? So move.
Black tongue.
Any public comment?
Jay Schwartz, support.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the commission?
I just have one. Are we going to require to establish our own local board?
No.
So how, I know there was discussion with this 345, and how that is going to murder the function in that capacity. Because if they are, then this makes sense. If, if we're going to have to have a local board, then really, they should probably be the ones to approve this.
The MERS board fits all the requirements for the Public Act 345, and the intent all along was to retain the funds and have them continue to manage the, the plan. So we're going to keep it with MERS, and they're going to act as de facto Public Act 345 board on our behalf and do the managing of the fund.
Roll vote. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell.
Aye.
Commissioner Oldsmun.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks. Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder.
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item number six, a matter of considering the City of Huntington Woods enter into a contractual agreement with the Ponyo Contracting for the 2020 pavement reconstruction and water main replacement project. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
So move.
A second.
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 Thank you. Any public comment?
Just one question for what is the grand total of the contract, please?
Three million, $2,701.50 for this season's work.
Actually, this contract might be spread over two years, but it is all the road reconstruction that we had identified for the first phase of the Public Act 345 road reconstruction project.
Thank you.
Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the city manager. I know there were multiple bids and a slight increase to the construction pricing. Could you just go into a little more detail about how this was graded and how the staff recommended them?
I'm sorry, how, what was created?
The recommendation from the staff, let's just go over in summary the recommendation. I know there were multiple bids and slight increase in the pricing compared to before.
Um, the, the bids were taking, had been taken years ago or a couple of years ago. This is basically an extension of the work that the Ponyo was doing for us with the road and sewer reconstruction project. And they kept the prices the same with the exception of ductile iron was the only thing that went up and it was a very reasonable amount. And so the, given their past experience with us and their familiarity with our, our city, the engineers recommended that we stick with them rather than bid it back out and risk losing the price freeze that we have with the exception of the ductile iron.
Mr. Mayor.
I see.
I just want to point out, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just had a question. In the letter that they presented, they had anticipated the COVID-related, you know, impact on workforce. I assume that the price is considering that as well.
The price of the, the project or the ductile iron?
The price of the project.
The, my understanding is that the prices are the same as they were last year. I'm sorry. With the exception of the one item that is more expensive this year. I, I think the, the COVID is going to impact the potential timing and how much work we can get done this year.
I see. Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Rosell, sorry about that.
Oh, sorry, yeah, I apologize. I, I just want to point out, Mr. Mayor, for the record here, that the, the city's consulting engineers produced a memo here where they're indicating that we're going to be working on Kingston between Huntington and York. Last I checked, Kingston dead end Wyoming, so not familiar with that. Then he lists two streets, King, Kinston. Those streets don't exist in our city, between Coolidge and Henley and Scotia and Newport. So this, this continues with this firm to be, my patience is legitimately wearing thin, where they continue to produce documents that are garbage. I mean, the names of our streets aren't even identified correctly in this memo. No different than the last presentation we had with incorrect and outdated information. So they're going to have to step their game up or I think this needs to go out to bid. And I'd like this memo corrected, remind the engineers the names of the streets in our city and how they're correctly spelled and where they run. Because Kingston does not run between Huntington and York. Thank you.
I had a similar comment by email to Amy. And I'll also note that they should correct PA 345, not PA 235.
I mean, I get we're not their biggest client. I totally understand that. I mean, we're not handing over large dollars like some of these other communities, but this, this is not what I would expect to see from an organization that's done business with the city as long as they have.
I think they are way overdue for replacement. We have lost funds because they have not, in the past, been able to alert us to funding programs where our neighbors using different contractors have been advised.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, I agree that the errors in this, in the identification of the streets may on one level seem tried or unimportant, but there's no excuse for it. It would be like an illegal document misspelling the names of the people you're representing or people you're proceeding against or anything. It's just, frankly, it's sloppy work. And I share Commissioner Rosell's comments. And I, I think it needs to be communicated them. We did not find it tried and we did not find it unimportant. We found it problematic and perhaps emblematic of other problems that we've seen in the past. It's not a, it's not a good way to continue the process.
I could take up those concerns tomorrow.
Forcefully, I might encourage. It's not, it's not, it's on one level, yeah, you can look at it and say it's topical. Another level, look at it and say it's inexcusable.
I'll just say for the record, it's just a board man between Huntington and York for those listening.
I don't care what it said.
I'm just sure anybody listening will know.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll take a vote. Mayor Pro Tem Roselle.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item number seven. It's a matter of an appointment of Rocco Fertura as representative and Amy Sullivan as alternate to the Southeast Oakland County Resource Recovery Authority, better known as SACRA, Board for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020. We have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any public comment?
Yes, would you please identify the first, the primary representative for those of us that are not familiar with him? Thank you.
Rocco is our Director of Public Works.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions from the commission? Okay, roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Roselle.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. And moving on to item number eight is another appointment to, a board, once again, appointing Rocco Fertura as our representative and Amy Sullivan as the alternate to the SACRA Board, the East Oakland County Water Authority for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020. We have a motion. Thank you, Commissioner Elder. A second.
Second.
Any public comment? Commissioner comments? Roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Roselle.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Item number nine is a matter of consideration of an agreement with Oakland County Animal Care Services to provide animal care over 1st of 2019 through September 30th of 2022. We have a motion.
All move.
Second.
Any public comment? Any commission comments or questions? Roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Roselle.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder.
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Number 10 is a matter of consideration of an ordinance to amend the city code of the City of Huntington Woods, Chapter 4, Article 3, and to delete sections 4 through 46, which was the pilot program. We have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Amy, do you, I know we have free available.
This ordinance permits a total of three permits within the city. Two of them have been granted. One of them is in the process of being granted. We've had no complaints, no concerns. They have been inspected. We haven't found any issues. So we're recommending that the provision in the ordinance that set up a one-year pilot program and that the ordinance continue as is unless at some time in the future you want to amend it.
Any public comment? Any comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'll just, at first I was skeptical. I wasn't sure how it would work. Went and saw the chicken coop in Berkeley and what it entailed. Glad we did it as a pilot. I have no regrets. It seems to have worked well, so no sense in blocking its pilots. Our ordinance protects residents who want to do this and it protects the neighbors. So I'd call it a success.
Yeah, I'm sharing that, Mr. Mayor, I, as somebody who wasn't just skeptical, but somebody who was very much against the idea for a long time, I will say that I think we learned a lot and I think we learned a lot about how if the folks who really want this, want this, what they're willing to do and go through to be able to maintain that, that, you know, the chickens on their premises. No, we haven't had a single complaint that I'm aware of to the public safety or to the city. So I mean, if it's not broke, don't fix it. And with three permits total, I see it as a very, a very inconsequential situation that turned out not to be a problem. So I'm, I'm, that's, I'm glad to be able to support taking out the pilot.
Okay.
Big change in, big change in attitude there, huh?
Yes, indeed. Roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Roselle.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson. Commissioner Olson, was that an aye?
It was.
Thank you. Commissioner Elder.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Commissioner. Thank you. Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. And moving on to item number 11 is a consideration of an ordinance to amend the City of Huntington Woods Code of Ordinances, Chapter 6 Building Regulations to delete Article 9, fences, walls, and hedges. And it's tired too. This is a final reading. We have a motion.
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Any public comment? All right, seeing none, any comments or questions from the commission? Roll call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Roselle.
Aye.
Commissioner Olson.
Aye.
Commissioner Elder.
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks.
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Item number 12 is a matter of consideration to approve Coffee Clutch as a recognized community group as established by the City of Huntington Woods Organizations Recognition Criteria.
All move.
Second.
Any public comment?
Claire would like to make a comment.
Yeah. Some of us were on Zoom on Sunday. I was surprised to see this on your agenda. So I asked the, the group of us that were just chatting on Sunday whether anybody was aware of this. No one, as far as I know, was contacted regarding this. We have never been interested in becoming something official under the city's auspices. And, you know, it's just a group of residents that get together. It's open, whether people do or don't. So I would like to ask that the commission set this aside so that they can at least approach the people that get together on an irregular basis on Sundays or whenever because we were not at all informed of this matter. And I think there were quite a few people who were quite put off by this. So I would suggest that you table it or at least reach out to those in some formal way to the people who get together or whatever, because we're not particularly interested in doing this and we don't meet your criteria anyway. We don't have a membership list. We don't have all sorts of things that you require. And we're not interested. So I would really ask that you not vote on this, that you set it aside and bring it to, you know, ask us. You didn't bother, so I would appreciate it if, and I think the group would appreciate it if you did so. I saw that Bonnie Nowakowski was on earlier, but apparently she couldn't wait. I know she was going to speak on this.
Amy, what's driving it?
Um, this is a, a group that does meet regularly at the recreation center and they are not charged any kind of a fee. And in order to be able to explain to other organizations why they're not being charged for the room usage, we thought it would be best to make them a city-recognized group. There's no change to the way they operate, to the relationship with the recreation department. It's just a formality on behalf of the city commission so that they could continue to meet and not be charged room rental.
Well, did somebody from that group solicit the designation?
No.
That I know of, they did not, Commissioner. My issue, and I raised the issue to start with, is that we can't have groups that we are renting the, or giving use of the rec center out to that are not paying a fee. Or if we continue to do that with no criteria, everybody would want the room for free.
We, we are not, I'm sorry. Mayor Paul, we are not a group. We are not an organized group in any way, shape, or form. We are simply a bunch of residents who come together.
I don't have any problem tabling this. What I do have a problem with is allowing a group to continue to use the rec center or any other room in the city for free if they're not a recognized group.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
This is a good group of folks. I've been to several of their meetings and I've been to several of their meetings and spoke to them on a number of issues, heard them out on issues. They meet every Sunday. Generally, it was in the senior room, but they had asked if they could be moved into a larger room. And so I worked with Amy to get them moved into a larger room. And so they generally, sometimes they'll meet in there depending on attendance and that type of thing, what's going on. And, but I'm in agreement, I, I'm sorry, were you talking while I was talking? I, I think that the, the issue is that I, I do agree if they're using this, then what's to prohibit someone else from coming in at that same time? And now we have a conflict where, you know, who's using the room? It's not, there's no rental agreement or anything like that. I think this protects this group really to ensure that they can continue to have access to these facilities. So I like it in that regard because it, it doesn't put them at risk of being bumped out by a recognized group. So, I mean, we don't have to act on this tonight. Nothing super pressing about it. If we want to table it, I'm fine with that. But I, I recognize your concern. It's, it's to protect the group and to protect the city too. So, yeah, we can move it to the next meeting.
I don't see them, I don't see us using your facilities for a long time, number one. So I find it very interesting that this should surface at this point. Secondly, I think you will push the group out of the rec center. Because I think they will be affronted and it was clear in their discussion on Sunday that the city is acting in this manner without having spoken to anyone of those who normally get together. So I would very much suggest that you table this.
You know, Claire, it sounds like we're trying to help the group, number one. And number two, I attended a meeting last summer and Ina Cohen, who was very much one of the driver behind this group, we had a, there was some concern about the comfort. If I recall, Amy will correct me, about the chairs that were there and how uncomfortable they were. And she expressed a desire to have better quality, more comfortable seating brought in. And we raised that with the city manager, that in fact occurred if I'm not mistaken. I mean, obviously, it isn't just for that group, but I agree with Joe. It's a pretty entrenched group of folks that meet there every Sunday. Like I said, I'm just, I, I'm, I understand the mayor's point here, but it seems like the, the motion is protective of the organization, not threatening of the organization, or even if you call it the group rather than the organization. I, I'm not sure what we're, you know, I don't want to be a, you know, a solution in search of a problem, but on the other hand, it seems like we're doing a good thing here. Maybe I'm not understanding it.
Commissioner Olson, we are not a specific group. We have no name. The city assigned some name to us. We don't have a membership list as is required by your own criteria. And I think, and Ina, who has been kind of a spearhead, was one of, I would have assumed would have been contacted on this. She was not. No one in the group was asked. I would really suggest in the middle of a pandemic that this is not very relevant since we are not meeting in any facility of the cities at this point. I don't quite know why it came up now, but I would truly suggest that you at least table it so that you can get some comment from the group. Or from seniors. I won't even say the group because there isn't a group, seniors.
I, I just want to point out that this actually was on the March agenda and we pulled it because that was the first remote meeting. And so we wanted to make sure only really critical items went on that agenda. I have reached out to Ina to explain this to her. I didn't make any formal contact with her because there's no change. Nothing changes with the relationship with the group and the way they use the recreation center. It is strictly a, a protection in case there are any complaints about a group using the recreation center or, and that being a terrorist defeat. Nothing changes.
Mr. Mayor, can I move to table?
I don't have any problem tabling this for now. It was meant to be an accommodation for the group.
No good deed goes unpunished, that's what.
So Carol, we have a motion on the floor in order to table that. What do we need to do?
Let's be unmuted here. Just same thing, just take, take a roll call vote on it. I would point out though, the conversation was interesting because really you can't just allow any group to use it without paying for the room. So I suggest that maybe, Claire, you might want to talk to your group a little bit. This really is to help you. Otherwise, I mean, the city is in a position where they will have to charge for use of the room.
Carol, I would ask you then whether a group of parents who get together and sit in the, in the hallway and talk while their kids are doing some kind of event and need to, and come every week and watch.
They're not using a room.
And me, are they having to rent the space?
That's totally.
That's not a room rental. We're not renting a room. We've been tossed around. We didn't ask to move. The senior lounge is too, too small. But Claire, look, if you can just table it and there's no discussion on a motion to table anymore.
Well, that was a comment to you. You may want to think about, you know, what you say to the group.
Okay, so Carrie wants to move on.
Yeah, do the roll, just do a roll call.
There's no motion to table. My motion, I mean, I'm sorry.
I thought, I thought Jeff moved to table it.
I moved to table.
I'm sorry. I was, I was talking. I guess maybe that's not coming through. I have a motion on the floor to approve this, but here's what.
Okay, I didn't hear that. Yes. Okay, so then there, so then there was some.
I'll withdraw it. Commissioner Olson eloquently pointed, no good deed goes unpunished. I'll withdraw my motion and we can just move this to the next.
Well, yeah, that's fine, but technically you would vote on the second motion first. So you can vote on the motion to table and that may or may not resolve your motion.
Okay, Commissioner Jenks made a motion to table. Do I have a second? Do I have a second to, to that motion? I, I don't see a second or hear a second, so.
I lost the feed. Can you hear me?
Okay, I can now. Can everybody hear me?
Yeah, there's bad audio.
We're back.
All right, I'll go back to Commissioner Jenks' motion to table. Can everybody hear that? Is there a second to that motion? Then that motion fails and we'll go to the motion that's on the floor is to approve the designation. Mayor Pro Tem Rozell?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
No.
Commissioner Jenks?
No.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, I'm going to vote no. Motion fails. Okay, moving on to item number 13. It's a matter of a resolution requesting the cancellation of the annual Woodward Dream Cruise event for 2020 due to public health and safety concerns attributed to COVID-19. This is an ordinance that several of the communities along the Woodward corridor are going to be taking up. City of Birmingham did last evening in their council meeting. I'm not going to read the whole ordinance, but I'm going to read a couple of the wherethes. Whereas the annual Woodward Dream Cruise event attracts crowds in excess of 1 million people to the Woodward corridor in Oakland County. The promotion of the 2020 Annual Woodward Dream Cruise Event is contributing to the current public health crisis by encouraging large crowds to convene during a worldwide pandemic. Whereas the cities of Birmingham, Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, and Berkeley have raised similar concerns for the health and safety of their residents and businesses for this event. We resolve due to the concerns for safety of the residents of the communities along the Woodward Avenue corridor and the million attendees that normally participate in this event with the potential spread of the coronavirus, that the City of Huntington Woods, in conjunction with neighboring communities, advocate the WDC, Inc., regretfully canceled the 2020 Woodward Dream Cruise event for these reasons and promote this cancellation to the public. And resolve that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Woodward Dream Cruise Board of Directors and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution also be shared with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, the Emergency Management and Homeland Security Division of the Department of the State Police, the Oakland County Emergency Management Office, the Oakland County Health Officer, and the cities of Berkeley, Birmingham, Bloomfield Hills, Bloomfield Township, Ferndale, Pleasant Ridge, Pontiac, and Royal Oak. We have a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'll move.
Second.
Any public comment? Any commissioner comments?
Now, I don't see how the state of affairs at this time, in terms of public health, lends itself to letting the Dream Cruise or supporting the Dream Cruise, if you will, because it's just too many people. I mean, even the other night, we get a nice night out on Woodward and the cruisers were out in force and in groups and having a good time. Normally, we'd be fine. Right now, it's just a little bit concerning. So it's a bad, bad position to have to be in all the way around and it's a bad decision to have to make, but it's the right decision to have to make.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with Commissioner Olson. There are no sporting events or anything else where people are gathering in, in large crowds to watch an event or anything like this. I, I wouldn't see this as being anything any different. I, I'm just curious what, so we passed this resolution and we say, we don't think this is a good idea. What are the ramifications if this organization continues to move forward and says, well, thanks for telling us you don't want it, but we're going to do it anyway?
There's, there would be two parts to that. One is the communities that support this resolution would not grant special event permits for group gatherings or events during the, during the Dream Cruise. We don't issue any of those events, so that's something that not, doesn't particularly impact us, but the community did agree that we do all have to be able to enforce this in the same manner. I'm talking about the people that would gather along the right way. Are we going to disperse those crowds? Are we going to allow them to continue? And so we're going to meet this Friday to talk about that and make sure that we have the support of the Oakland County Sheriff's and the Michigan State Police so that all of our policing agencies are handling the crowds in the same manner.
Any other comments?
Are there any events that take place specifically in Huntington Woods, like in the bank parking lot or anything of that nature?
There are no city-sponsored events. We do tell the property owners along Woodward that they can rent out those or they can, they could take those right-of-way parking spaces, you know, the ones that are at the angle, if they want to rent those out, you know, for a fee, they can. I know the bank parking lot was used for our public safety for a, you know, kind of a headquarters, if you will, along Woodward, but I'm not aware of any other business events that we have in Huntington Woods. But we're going to have to decide whether or not to tell Jeff Radzky or the other business owners that they cannot rent out those spaces in order to, you know, keep the crowds to a minimum. And I think that's the direction that we're going. If we're not going to recognize this event, then we're not going to recognize their ability to rent spaces for that event.
Do our ordinances currently allow for that? Or do we have to adopt an ordinance to permit that?
I don't know that we have an ordinance on that.
Yeah, because it's, it's, they really M.D.A. property.
Right.
So we, we, we don't object to them renting out those spaces. And we say it's between them and M.D.A. And M.D.A.'s never put up any kind of a, a challenge to them doing that.
Well, it'd be a moot point if they cancel the Dream Cruise.
Right.
And, and do you believe that's what's going to happen?
I think that's the direction that we're moving, yes.
Oh, but I mean, spoken with the Dream Cruise organizers, the group behind, behind the Dream Cruise, the committee or organization, they're, they're not pushing to go forward, are they?
Their initial, initially, they were pushing to go forward with an event. They were, their idea was to have the cruisers come out on Woodward, but not to have the people come and watch.
Oh, right.
What we're reacting to.
Right. I support, I support the resolution because it's correct public policy at this time. Regretful public policy, but no choice.
Okay, roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. Moving on to our last agenda item, is a matter of setting the date for a follow-up study session for September 22nd, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Hopefully at City Hall and not as a Zoom meeting, but that will be determined at a later date. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any public comment? Comments? Roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tem Rozell?
Aye.
Commissioner Elder?
She said aye, but she can't hear her.
Aye. Hear me now.
Commissioner Jenks?
Aye.
Commissioner Olson?
Aye.
Mayor Paul, aye. Motion carries. And moving on to the manager's report.
Yeah, I want to let the commission know that we are going to start having remote meetings for our advisory committees. It's something that we've sort of put on hold for March and April as we kind of get our bearings. The first advisory board meeting will be the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting. It will be a remote meeting. It'll be the Tuesday after Memorial Day and that the recreation staff is working on summer programming with virtual classes, activities, and events. And the hometown Herald will have more information about the, about the events. And they'll also talk about them at the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting since it's a little bit different format than we've done in the past. And also with the weather getting warmer, although this weekend was terrible, but assuming it's only going to get better from here out, here and out, I want to remind people that yardways can't be put out until four o'clock on Mondays, not to put it out over the weekend. And that lawn maintenance can't start before 8:00 AM. I had a call about that resident last week with some contractors that started at, at 7:30. So just a reminder for residents as we getting into the spring weather. And that's all I have.
Any questions of the city manager?
Just one. So the governor's order allows the, these types of meetings through?
End of June.
End of June?
June 28th, I think.
Okay. Okay, it was mid or late June. So potentially, most committees will have another meeting potentially like this, and then if it's not extended, we'll be back to as usual, as far as meeting in person in July.
Yes, that if it's not extended.
Yeah.
I have a question for Amy. Thank you so much to you and the staff for looking at virtual programs. Since school has been out, I think it's been a challenge for a lot of, for everyone, but especially children. And I'd like to thank the rest of the commission for their support on this as well, and looking at creative ways of doing virtual programming over the summer, especially given restrictions and stay-home orders that you've had to navigate through. Can you give us an update on what we should expect from, or are, is the staff there yet? I don't know what we can expect from the May 26 Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting?
Well, the agenda's out. The staff is going to give a run-through of the different types of programming that's going to be available to residents and over the summer. And it'll be the same information that's going out in the Hometown Herald, but that'll be out in the first couple of weeks in June. So it'll be a sneak peek at the May meeting.
Okay, do they tend to be like virtual camps, or do we not know yet?
You know, I can forward you the, the Hometown Herald draft. It's not, it's not finalized yet, but that'll give you a flavor for what we're going to be looking at.
Okay. And that meeting is an opportunity also for residents to hear about the proposals and provide input. Is that correct? Great.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, Mrs. Calabash.